Well, welcome to the City of Bellevue Regular Council Meeting for Monday, October 5th, 2020. Welcome, everybody. First, we'll start with roll call.
Mayor Robinson.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newrenhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
Present.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Great, thank you.
So one thing we haven't been able to do since we've been meeting remotely is our flag salute. And I know that the council members, we've all missed doing that. And I think our city has missed it as well. So I believe Charmaine has found a way for us to do this virtually tonight. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Barksdale to lead us in the flag salute.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Now we're on to oral communications. City Clerk, do we have any oral communications for tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do have four individuals signed up to speak under oral communications. And the first speaker is Christopher Randles. Mr. Randles, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. And your time begins now.
Excellent. Evening, council members. Christopher Randles, 15421 Southeast 4th Place, 98007. I'm speaking to you tonight actually as a private citizen, but with grave concerns regarding nominees to the Transportation Commission this evening. For full disclosure, although I myself had applied for a commissioner position and I did not move forward in the process, I am excited by the prospect of helping shape the city's transportation future by other means. However, the candidates that were originally put forward for confirmation this evening are, in my view, unfit or unprepared to meet the challenges that Bellevue will face as we adapt our transportation system to meet the goals of environmental stewardship and In Vision Zero. I would first like to draw attention to Mr. Derek Jeldenhy's, real estate agent and management consultant. Concerningly, his Twitter account contains racist and derogatory remarks addressed to public officials and private citizens. I have sent correspondence to council containing images and links to examples of racist, homophobic, and egregious content that he has posted, and his mind is saying that he has since withdrawn himself from consideration. This is the right decision, but I question why he should correspond with city staff and community outrage on social media to bring this issue to the city's attention. Mr. Jeldenhy's Twitter page is the third result on a Google search of his name, and even basic vetting would uncover information that proves this person is not fit to serve Bellevue. I strongly urge council and city staff to alter commission nominee procedures so that we do not solely rely on interviewees' answers and self-reported qualifications when making a decision. Next, Mrs. Christina Beeson is the Vice President of Liberty Bank, but has no listed transportation experience on her professional profiles. And although I find it important to respect diverse political thought for most matters of public interest, Ms. Beeson also declared herself as a Republican to vote in the party's Washington State presidential primary this year. While I sympathize with council member's aversion to partisanship, I find this information is relevant to her ability to serve on this commission because this body will be tasked with multimodal road improvements to facilitate both Vision Zero and environmental stewardship goals to increase traffic safety and climate change action. However, the state GOP platform still does not acknowledge the scientific reality of climate change, demeans complete streets programs as a "squandering of our limited transportation funding", and thus fails to acknowledge the importance that modifying our transportation system will have in addressing environmental and safety issues. Not only is this thinking counter to the latest science, it is counter to Bellevue's own stated goals. With her choice in publicly associating with this organization, I believe the city's residences are more information regarding Ms. Beeson's personal perspectives on these matters, issues which she will have great power over during her four-year term. Finally, Mr. Matthew Klatznik. As the general manager of the shops at the Bravur, a holder of real estate licenses along the West Coast, and a graduate of business administration, I am also unaware as to what precise transportation qualifications Mr. Klatznik possesses that make him uniquely prepared to address the challenges Bellevue will be facing. Challenges like accommodating for our growth in sustainable, equitable ways, protecting all road users from the dangers of traffic violence, creating a 21st century transportation system that addresses a significant impact that transportation presently has on climate change. I believe more time is needed to review these candidates and discuss the exact process behind why and how these individuals were chosen to lead our city into its transportation future so the public can be sure we're making the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Bruce Bowman. Mr. Bowman, if you are connected to the meeting, can you please use the raised hand function so I can... Looks like you might have disconnected. Mr. Bowman, can you hear me? Mr. Bowman? Okay, I'm going to circle back to Mr. Bowman. The next speaker would be Allison House. Ms. House, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello, my name is Allison House, and I've been a Bellevue resident for 40 years. I live in the Woodridge neighborhood. My comment concerns the upcoming community forums for the review of the police use of force policies. I'm concerned that outreach about the forums will not reach those members of the community who may not have had positive interactions with the police in the past and who might have valuable insights to share. Can the council reassure us that they will be making every effort to reach out to groups that feel disenfranchised and unheard, as well as to Bellevue residents who have limited or no access to the internet? Every potential form of communication with the forum that I have seen thus far has required internet access. In addition, there may be members of our community who, for various reasons, do not feel comfortable sharing their views and experiences in a public setting. I would hope that this is being taken into account in the planning of the forums and that there will be a way to offer confidential feedback to the review. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, I'll circle back to Mr. Bowman. Mr. Bowman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can, perfect. So Mr. Bowman has offered some slides to accompany his statement this evening. And I will pop those up now. And I will be tracking your time separately. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Bruce Bowman, I'm a Bellevue resident. I live up at 16551 Southeast 45th Place. Been a resident now for over eight years. Next chart, please. Yeah, what I'd like to talk to you today a little bit about is the Bellevue ESP Plan, Draft ESP Plan. As you can see here, the IPC report in 2018, they talked about the, we need to get our greenhouse gas emissions down by 50% by 2030, or the, basically, we have no amount of intervention will stop the climate progression across the entire planet. So the problem I see with the Bellevue Draft ESP Plan is in the energy section, and it does not address anything in the pipe gas in any meaningful way. Even if you look at the Bellevue data that's provided in the draft plan, 92% of the greenhouse gas comes from buildings and transportation. 50-plus percent of those greenhouse gases comes from existing buildings. The largest single contributor. 46% of the entire energy use within the Bellevue community comes from natural gas. To me, that's the elephant in the room and the opportunity to be addressed. Next chart, please. So climate change, it's real. And it needs to be addressed with aggressive leading edge approach. 90-plus percent of Bellevue residents want the council to take leading edge and bold actions. The Draft ESP Plan talks about studies and exploration and long-term considerations, which, in my opinion, is just kicking the ball down the road. It's not addressing it. Approaches and technologies exist today that are cost-effective to address greenhouse gases, and they're being used elsewhere around the country and around the planet.
One minute remaining.
Address of greenhouse gas, aggressive greenhouse gas creates jobs and better quality of life for the individuals. The Draft ESP is weak. It's up to you, the leadership team, to take responsibility and move us forward. If you look at the current opportunities, we have rezoning in East Main, Willburton, Bell Red, Lakewood. Make those a zero emission zone. Other actions Bellevue can take. Stand up the sustaining directors, many cities are doing, that can lead across the departments and report to the mayor. Follow the direction that a large majority of the city council has been indicating. Take a strong action on climate. Authorize a Citizens Climate Action Advisory Group to help accelerate the city's actions and educate your residents on the importance of taking action. We're smart people. Bellevue's a unique place, and we will support you in these actions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The final speaker signed up this evening is Mallory Van Abema. Ms. Van Abema, I am so sorry, I think I'm mispronouncing that, but can you hear me?
No, that was perfect.
Okay, perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council Members. This is Mallory Van Abema with the Housing Development Consortium, or HDC. And tonight, I am commenting to share our gratitude for all the efforts elected leaders, city staff, stakeholders, both from the community and organizations have invested to push forward the important work laid out in Bellevue's Affordable Housing Strategy Plan. And I'm also here to urge swift action on the remaining goals that were identified by the Technical Advisory Group in 2017. It is critical that Bellevue adapts its local systems and policies related to the development and provision of affordable housing. Our region is facing an enormous shortage of safe, sustainable, affordable, and healthy homes and communities that provide residents with ample opportunity. Robust economic growth was clear prior to the pandemic and continued for many who are members of the professional class and have been able to adapt to new business and working conditions. The folks that are being left behind were the same folks navigating a paycheck-to-paycheck reality pre-COVID-19. They're the people who are educating future generations, keeping the community safe and clean, meeting the basic and secondary needs of Bellevue residents, among countless other important roles. They are essential. The number of essential workers will grow in accordance with the city's anticipated growth, and the number of cost-burdened and insecurely housed seniors, folks with disabilities, students, families, and individuals will grow unless the city expedites the enactment of the Affordable Housing Strategy Goals. Updating the MFTE program to ensure it's adequately calibrated is something we deeply support. However, this program is not going to meet the housing needs of folks with very low and extremely low incomes, which the city's own housing needs assessment identified as having the greatest need for housing options. Those same folks are many of the essential community members I previously mentioned. I know I would like to live in the city that I work in, and I suspect the same is for many in the Bellevue workforce who are financially unable to do so and weather very long commutes to get into their work. HDC stands ready to support a productive partnership with the city, and the urgent need for affordable housing options has only grown. And we appreciate everything the city and staff can do to meet this moment. So thank you so much for listening to me this evening.
Thank you, and that completes our list for oral communications.
Thank you. So, City Manager, I have two comments to make to you tonight. One is, I'm wondering if you can get back to Mrs. House and answer some pretty thoughtful questions that were presented tonight. And number two, I just want to make a comment about the council appointments to boards and commissions. I don't think it's always obvious what somebody's qualities are in considering them for the role on a board or commission. And I know it's a tough process, and there are many, many good candidates. But I don't think I've ever seen the public come out against nominations like this based on social media. And social media is kind of a new thing for our city. In the last five years, I think it's taken on a life of itself. And I'm just wondering if there is a way in the criteria for selection, if we can examine some other criteria. I think we need to just look at the criteria for nominating somebody, and it should include probably their social media background or not. But we should have that conversation because it's out there for the public to see, and it hasn't been something that we have considered in the past. And I just would like the council to have a conversation about the criteria we use to make our selections. So if we can put that somewhere on our, either our retreat or some study session or something, I would just like to address that a little bit. Because I don't want people being afraid to apply for a board or commission that they're going to get shamed publicly by the community who just looks at one aspect of their background and makes a judgment on it. You know, that's not what this is about. But I also think we need to have a solid view of what this person represents, if they're going to represent the city. So I think we just need a little more information, and we also need to have a system that makes it more civil for people to be appointed on a board and commission.
So Mayor, this is the same manager. We could certainly look for date and time, as you mentioned, either on a study session or a council retreat topic to bring that matter up.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. And then I believe we are on to the report of the city manager.
Yes, we are. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I have three items to report on tonight. I just want, the first one is just to point out something on your consent calendar, item 8B. It's awarding the construction bid for the Northeast 12th Street multipurpose path on 108th Avenue, 212th Avenue Northeast. I'm pointing this out because this was one that received quite a bit of public interest in the, in the project as it went forward. And I just wanted to point that out to you. I have two other items. The next one is really, this is, this is an update from REI regarding the recent sale of their planned headquarters in the Bell Red District. Joining us this evening is Mark Baraka, the Director of Government and Community Affairs, to provide more information and to express thanks for the partnership with the city over the past several years. As REI has expressed in their communications with us over the past month, I'd also like to note the importance of our continued partnership opportunities going forward. And while the future looks different than anyone expected a few months ago, we look forward to a continued presence by REI and Bellevue and the region. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark. Mark?
Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Charmaine, thank you for setting this all up. I'm going to share my screen since I have a few slides to guide the conversation and illustrate what a beautiful city you all oversee. You know, I think when I first showed up on behalf of REI Co-op in front of council just over four years ago, we had just coined as a co-op this notion. It's just a crystallization of what we stand for over the course of our 80 years of existence. And that is that a life outdoors is a life well-lived. And it's wonderful to be able to say that with the skyline and the shoreline of Bellevue in the backdrop. I see so many of you with Bellevue behind you. And for sure, that was one of the things that attracted Bellevue to REI for a location for a new headquarters. And then your own data bears this out. This is, this is a report that we co-produced for a bunch of cities around the country a couple of years ago using data from Trust for Public Land. And it just indicates, among other things, that Bellevue has 54 acres of public land within a 16-minute drive of home. And that the national average is 36 acres within a short drive of home. That's per capita. That's the number of acres per capita. So it's an extraordinary amount of access that the City of Bellevue has. 88% of Bellevue residents are within a 10-minute walk of a park. The national average is 55%. So you all are stewarding a wonderful city in terms of its access to green space. And again, that's one of the things that attracted us. I would just say that in the intervening years, as we built out in the Spring District and engaged more and more deeply into the Bellevue community specifically, that, you know, it just was fulfilling every one of our hopes. We deepened our relations with the not-for-profit partners who are working on the east side. And the public-private partnership that we matured with the city could not have been more gratifying. We went ahead and have been building this state-of-the-art, sustainable campus on the east side there in the Spring District. And though, we're never moving into it, and while that brings a tear to the eye of a lot of people who worked for REI, who wanted to populate this building and be proud of the sustainable work style near mass transit, near bike lanes, near protected bike lanes. We are proud to, at least as we move to a more dispersed headquarters scenario, we are glad to be able to leave for the City of Bellevue. This national exemplar and potentially an international exemplar of what a livable, sustainable corporate campus can be. You know, we built it so that we would meet as many of those lead and sustainability standards as possible. And we're confident in our conversations with, at least with our colleagues at Facebook, that they, in part, bought the property from us because, like for us, the satisfaction, gratification of their employees that comes from working at a place that is so sustainable is important to them as well. I want to emphasize that, while we can take a snapshot of where we've been as a partnership and where we are today, that we are, as Brad indicated, rolling forward. And we continue to look at Bellevue as a partner of ours. Luckily, on my team, we have great relationships with our counterparts at Facebook. If you haven't met these two yet, I'd encourage you to do so. Stephen Uy is the lead representative to this area, and Sarah Liscani is another wonderful person. So I feel that in some respects, you've not lost your contact with the REI team, but you've gained contact with the, with the Facebook team as well. We continue to consider Bellevue home. We have over 10,000 people who have joined REI Co-op using the Bellevue REI store as their home base. These are a few of the pictures of events that we participated in, organizations that we supported during the build-out of the campus. We have, you know, folks celebrating bike lanes, folks celebrating protected bike lanes, the East Side Rail Corridor or East Trail, and we have folks celebrating access, access to Lake Washington. This type of engagement with the city by REI, by REI employees and by our members is going to continue. As part of our announcement, I'm sure you all heard, I think I sent you all an email, that we have committed alongside Facebook to invest at least a million dollars of our own money, Facebook its own million dollars, to support a capital project that will help flesh out East Trail and make the vision that you all have been working on for so many years all that much closer to reality. We look forward to pulling out a few more rails as, as we proceed. We are in conversations with your boathouse team. The pandemic has changed things. The pandemic was a major reason, was the major reason, frankly, why we reevaluated our headquarters strategy. We, we look forward to using our store as a hub, as I mentioned. But the boathouse, when it was open, and when we were renting kayaks out of it, was an enormous jumping off point, both figuratively and literally, for our employees and for our members to enjoy all that, all that Bellevue has to offer in terms of water access. So we'll see where those conversations go once this type of activity becomes more, more feasible from a public health perspective. I just flagged this picture because it's indicative of us being still present in the Bellevue community. As I wrap, I just want to throw here on the slide for you to look at and absorb, and for anybody from the Bellevue community who's watching tonight, to absorb the total number of people and the number of divisions within city government who were and continue to be such great partners with REI Co-op. It's just very, very heartening as somebody who works for a for-profit entity, albeit a co-op, who works for a for-profit entity, to find parts of city government and staff at city government who are just so willing to embrace a shared vision. And you can see that we have a wealth of connectivity with the Parks and Community Services Group. I mentioned the boathouse. Your transportation team was phenomenal. Likewise, your communications team. The city manager was awesome. The council was great as well. I know there's been some changeover, but your support throughout has been wonderful. And then we fleshed out these not-for-profit partnerships as a result of our, our engagement over the course of the past couple of years. So, you know, with that, I just want to say again, a big thank you from REI Co-op. And while it was a great adventure building a headquarters, and we all should be proud of that facility, the relationship will continue.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just going to say thank you for the whole council, for the inspiration from REI to get the East Trail going and, and get the connections going that we need to do. You, you've inspired us, and you will continue to inspire us. And, and there's a great life to be had outdoors in Bellevue, thanks in part to REI. So thank you for your influence.
Yeah, my dream was to get an e-bike and commute by e-bike using East Trail. And even though that might not be my next commute, who knows? I don't know where the satellite facilities are going to show up. I'm still going to get that, get that e-bike, and I'm going to go up and down East Trail, sure.
Well, it will be my next commute, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, and we look forward to the continued working partnership with you as REI moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, our next item on the manager report is really like, it's a good news story. I'm just so pleased to announce to the council that the city was recently recognized by 44 Public Technology Institute, also known as PTI Awards in three categories. One in emergency technology applications, another in geospatial information systems and sustainability. PTI's award, annual award program recognizes local governments for their innovative technology, enhanced service delivery, reduced costs, and improved operations. And I'm here to tell us more about the awards as Sabra Snyder, our Chief Information Officer, who in large part is, is why we're getting this award. So Sabra?
Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, and good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. City Manager Miyaki is very kind. These awards are definitely the results of a lot of hard work of IT staff and partnerships across the city. In early September, Bellevue was honored by the Public Technology Institute for four technology projects. Next slide, please. As the city manager mentioned, those four PTI awards were in three categories. Emerging technology applications, geospatial information systems, and sustainability. And before we talk specifically about those four projects, I wanted to make you aware, two of the four awards are for projects focused on achieving council's smart city vision by driving with data and analytics to improve operations and customer service. All four of these projects represent innovative approach to delivering services both internally and externally. In the geospatial category, the, the award-winning application was a 911 dispatch integrated mapping application. For this award, staff in IT and transportation developed a mapping application to integrate real-time 911 dispatch data with traffic operations, video monitoring, and incident archiving. The application helps both staff and systems further manage traffic during potential disruptions, ideally helping Bellevue residents and businesses get around more easily when traffic is disrupted. You may recall, this is the second award for this application. The first was a Transportation Systems Management and Operations Award from the National Operations Center of Excellence. The next award for sustainability focuses on smart water systems as part of council's smart cities vision. For this one, staff in IT and utilities partnered to create two systems that aim to proactively improve water reliability and conservation. This platform helps ensure the continuity of water meter data. This platform helps ensure the continuity of water meter data and usage from the ground installation. To the customer data. Next slide, please. Thank you. In the emerging technology category, Bellevue was recognized for two projects. The first is a public facing chatbot that was launched to help answer frequently asked questions about COVID nineteen. This chatbot was launched in the spring and later staff added multilingual capabilities to the chatbot. The bot reflects work across multiple teams, including IT, communications, community development and parks. And is currently available in six languages. Staff use feedback from the bot itself and from people who are using it to improve future results. And last but certainly not least, as a project council first heard about on the August third meeting this year. IT partnered with Development Services to pilot the first robotic process automation project for Bellevue. As you may remember, robotic process automation provides a platform to automate complex manual processes. Thus freeing up internal human resources for higher value work. Bellevue is very honored by the recognition from the Public Technology Institute and thank you for your time this evening to talk about these awards.
Congratulations. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you, Sabra. That concludes my report this evening, Mayor and council members.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so we're on to recommendations for the Transportation Commission. Councilmember Robertson, would you like to put forward your recommendations?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to go through a little longer because we've had some public comment on this. Talk about the the procedures and then talk about the candidates who I'm putting forward. First, we had twenty seven applicants and we offered interviews to twelve. On the interview panel was the Transportation Commission staff, Kevin McDonald, Vice Chair, Lorianna Marciente. And myself, Director Singalakis was also invited, but he was unable to attend. And as my colleagues know, all council members were also invited to participate in the interview process. You know, it's so hard to choose in Bellevue because we have so many wonderful candidates and it's, I know that you probably join me in finding that to be the hardest part. The two candidates that I'm putting forward tonight scored in the top by the panel based on their thoughtful approach. Extensive board and civic engagement experience, interest and experience with community building and transportation. Per our process, the names were provided to council a week before they were printed in the agenda. I'd like to address before I get to the people of the comments during public communications. And the emails. I find it very troubling that members of the public, particularly other applicants who were not chosen for this volunteer position. Would make public comments denigrating people they don't know. And I'm not gonna address the third candidate who is withdrawn because I don't believe in talking about people on the record. When we are not putting them forward, but I'm very disappointed to see. That members of the public are opining upon people that they do not know based only on a Google search. We have a process that we follow to vet these volunteers. None of that should ever include trying to determine political affiliation, which I did not do. Nor should the candidates be screened for that. In fact, it to do so was a violation of the code which specifically says. Commission members shall be appointed without respect to political affiliation. We've never done that and in my eleven years on council and I never do. Furthermore, the reason that we interview is to determine qualifications and most importantly, ability to work in a group with fellow commissioners. Generally, we do not look for people who are technical experts for boards and commissions. As that role is served by our trusted and very competent staff. Commission members rather are meant to be engaged and smart members of our community work in a group with the assistance of staff. To help the council implement its vision, but who don't have their own particular agenda in why they are seeking to serve. Because they are there to serve the public, not any particular advocacy group. I also personally look for people who live in different parts of the city that we can, so that we can get as much geographic representation as possible. I also look for a history of positive public involvement and board experience. That's because that shows that they are able to work in that kind of setting where they're aboard, they're not the staff. They they work at the direction of the council with the staff. And for the Transportation Commission, I look for people who truly buy into the multimodal approach that we need to make our city work. And I hope that having members of the public come forward to denigrate people that are up for appointment will not be the new normal. That would be the antithesis of what I've always considered to be the Bellevue way, which is. That we engage civilly with each other on the issues and not in personal attacks. That said, let me tell you about the two people I'm really excited to put up for appointment tonight. First is Matthew Kletznick. He currently lives in the Wilburton area and is the general manager of the Braver. He's a member of the Board of Chamber, the Bellevue Chamber Board of Directors. And has been working on transportation issues for about fifteen years. Specifically working with employers and the local government to shift employees. From single occupancy vehicles to other modes, whether it's ped, bike or transit. He's done this work both in Bellevue and in California. Previously, he was on the Board of Directors of the Sacramento Transportation Management Association, which was a group of employers and building managers. Working on transportation issues to help commuters use alternative modes. He's a big supporter of transit and bicycle community commuting and wants to increase multimodal options and make our city safer and more walkable. He also, I think, will be great because he can see how we can shift, the big employers can help shift people to other modes. And we have a lot of big employers like Facebook and Amazon coming to Bellevue and we need to work with them. And make sure our transportation plan helps them help their people get into Bellevue, not all in single occupancy vehicles. Christina Beeson is my second appointment for tonight. She currently lives in the Old Main area and walks everywhere, including to work. She's a bank vice president with an extensive record of civic engagement and board experience in Bellevue. She's been involved with Bellevue Boys and Girls Club, United Way, Bellevue Rotary, Youth Care. And Food Lifeline where she chaired the fundraising committee. Specific to transportation, she previously served on the Bellevue Downtown Association Transportation Commis- Committee. And is closely followed and is supportive of Bellevue's Smart Mobility Plan. She brought that up and talked about that a lot during her. Interview and she also talked about the Environmental Stewardship Initiative, which she is strongly supportive of. And she loves the city council's adopted vision for Bellevue. She wants to help move more people in all modes, particularly in light of the significant number of jobs that are coming to Bellevue. And to make Bellevue a safer place to walk and bike. She was particularly concerned about road safety as she walks everywhere and which is of course, one of council's. Priorities for how we envision transportation in the future. So both had great interviews, both were highly ranked by the interview panel. And I think that they will both, especially because of all their board experience and engagement with Bellevue, will make great transportation commissioners. And I would move their appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
I I move, I move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's a unanimous approval of your two recommendations. Thank you very much. All right, on to the consent calendar. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please.
I move to approve the consent counter.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Consent counter passes. All right, we have a public hearing for the release of two easements. Mr. Miyake, can you introduce this to us, please? Can't hear you yet.
All right, sorry about that. As you mentioned, there is a public hearing with the release of some utility easements. These easements are being released as part of a redevelopment project at ninety six twenty five Northeast A Street. Following the public hearing, the council we asked to take an action on the proposed ordinance. To release the surplus easements and for a brief staff report, I'm gonna turn it over to Eric McDaniel. Our real property manager in our finance and asset management department. Eric?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight's staff report is regarding a request to release a water easement, a utility easement and a portion of a second utility easement, all located at nine six two five Northeast Eight Street. And tonight's public hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed releases. The easements are located on the property shown here in purple, which is just south of Northeast Eight Street between ninety sixth and ninety eighth. The property is being redeveloped and is a part of the permitting process. The owner has requested that the city release these existing easements on their property. The two public utility easements in question were reserved by city, by by the city. In street vacation ordinances that were passed in nineteen fifty nine. These areas are shown in solid blue for Ninety Seventh Avenue Northeast and orange for Northeast Seventh Street. And the water easement, which is shown in blue crosshatching, was recorded just before the Ninety Seventh Avenue Northeast Street Vacation in nineteen fifty nine. And it overlaps the vacated area, so those two are essentially in the same place. And since two of the easements were created through street vacation ordinances, we're proposing to amend those ordinances to remove the easement areas from the property. As part of their permitting requirements, the property owner will be dedicating new public right of way as well as utility and water easements along the north. The Ninety Seventh Avenue Northeast alignment, as shown on this slide. Following the public hearing, staff requests council action on the proposed ordinance authorizing the release of the water easement and amendment of ordinances three two nine and three three eight. To release the public utility easements from the subject property. This ends our staff report and will be available for any questions you may have following the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so city clerk, do we have any public comment?
There were no individuals signed up previously to speak on this topic. So at this point, I would ask if there is anyone connected to this meeting who wishes to make a public statement in the public hearing. If so, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or star nine if you're connected with a phone. I only see two individuals and neither have raised their hand.
We have any questions or comments from the council on this? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, is there a motion to adopt ordinance sixty five twenty eight?
I move to approve ordinance sixty five twenty eight authorizing the release of an existing water easement and amending ordinances three two nine and three three eight. To release a public utility easement and a portion of a second public utility easement, which had been declared surplus.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's passed. Thank you very much. So we have three study session items. And Mr. Miyake, I'm gonna let you take over with this and introduce them for me. I can't hear you again.
There you go. Sorry about that. Keeps making the same mistake. So we, as you mentioned, we have three study sessions and topics on your agenda this evening. The first one is with regard to the Public Safety Emergency Radio Network, also known as PCERN. Tonight, you're gonna receive a briefing on the PCERN system progress and the operator interlocal agreement. This particular topic was last before you on April twenty fourth of twenty twenty. Tonight's King County staff are joining us to provide an update on the status of PCERN, on the PCERN project. And will explain the operator interlocal agreement, which will create a new nonprofit government agency that will operate PCERN. And staff tonight is seeking council direction to return with a resolution authorizing. Execution of an operator interlocal agreement on a future consent agenda. Joining us this evening is Nathan McCollum, our deputy city manager. From our city manager's office as well as Chief Hagan from the Fire Department. And from the county, David Mendel, the PCERN project director. Is joining us tonight as well as I believe Kimberly Newbird, the PCERN project deputy division director. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Nathan.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newman House and council, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. As City Manager Miyake mentioned at the end of the presentation, we are looking for direction, council to. Bring back the interlocal agreement at a future council meeting. Today marks a culmination of years of collaboration and co-ownership in our radio system for emergency communications. This is the most important public safety communication tool that we have. And we anticipated the changes in the system that the council would hear tonight. Over two decades ago, the Bellevue City Council entered into a partnership for regional emergency communications in what became known. As the East Side Public Safety Communications Agency, or EBSKA. And then fast forward to twenty fifteen, after hearing the results of an analysis of the radio system, the council then assigned. Assigned on to another interlocal agreement that launched the transition. To build out and eventually operate a new state of the art system and broader regional partnership. Since twenty fifteen, we've been actively involved in the transition and we are getting near the end. As the city manager mentioned, Fire Chief Hagan is here with us on staff and it's also my pleasure to introduce Director. Of PCERN, David Mendel, who joins us this evening and will walk the council through progress to date and discuss the structure and responsibilities of the new PCERN. Operator. Mr. Mendel, I turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Hopefully my screen is sharing. For you to see. For the record, I'm David Mendel. The director responsible for the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network, or what we commonly call PCERN. I'd also like to acknowledge my deputy director, Kimberly Newbird, who is also online. And available tonight if we need her to weigh in at some point. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for having us here tonight. For the next few minutes, I'll quickly go through our presentation and hope to answer any questions you have for me. Providing my voice holds out for the next ten minutes. In the presentation tonight, I will talk to you about what PCERN is. What it will bring to you and give you a very short project update as well as discuss some of the aspects. Of the operator interlocal agreement. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about PCERN itself. This slide provides a little of the background and hopefully ties together some of this presentation. As you probably know, there are twelve owners of the current radio system. We often refer to these twelve agencies as the partners or the parties. The city of Bellevue is one of those twelve partner agencies. The project is fully funded through a two thousand fifteen voter approved property tax. That began collections in two thousand and sixteen and will run for nine years. In early two thousand and fifteen, the twelve partners all signed an interlocal agreement. Which we refer to as the implementation ILA. This agreement set up the PCERN project governance. At the same time, the partners also executed a memorandum of agreement. That pledged to create yet another interlocal agreement, which we call the operations ILA. The operations ILA is the topic that brings us together for this presentation tonight. I think most of you know this, but for those that may be new to the topic. The network that we are building will be the foundation for first responder, public safety. Communications throughout King County for the next twenty years. Now, if you don't mind, I'd like to show you a couple of pictures and show you the great work that we've been doing around the region recently. This picture shows a portable radio that a police officer is holding and this is. A typical, excuse me, kind of radio that we will be issuing out to the cities. Here you can see a radio tower that we've built on the far right. A structure that is what we call the shelters that house the electronic equipment. And then on the left here, you can see some foundation work that is occurring that likely is for a very large fuel tank. One of our most remote radio sites is called Sobieski out near Sky Comish off of US two. In order to begin work at that site this the summer. And ensure that we could get done with all of our work before the coming winter, we had to plow snow to open up access to the site. These pictures were taken in very early July to do those that work. This is one of our more daring construction efforts located off of I ninety. Here, we had to use several very large helicopters to fly in. Heavy machinery, cement and all the construction materials used to build the radio site. Including a radio tower that was brought in in three very large sections. Helicopters were used because the location is inaccessible by vehicle. You may ask yourself, why would we build a site that we cannot access by vehicle? You may ask yourself, why would we build a site that we cannot access by vehicle? The short story is that we had to. But thankfully, this site is a special kind of relay site that does not have any electronic equipment and therefore will require very little to no maintenance over the lifetime of PCERN. The round device sitting here is a twelve-foot-in-diameter microwave dish. And this is what it looks like when the tower is finished and that antenna from the last slide is in place. This is one of our brand-new towers out in the mountains as well. This is an example of our staff at work in and around the radio sites. Here, we have a gentleman that's doing some radio testing. On the left and on the right are two gentlemen getting ready to climb a tower and wearing protective equipment to do that work. I hope you enjoyed these brief pictures, but I would like to transition back to talking about the new network. PCERN will provide new digital technology to support voice radio communications. We will be expanding capacity, coverage, and connectivity significantly compared to our current network. Our system vendor is under contract to provide support throughout the twenty-year anticipated life of PCERN. Once formed, the PCERN operator will be a single-service provider for all users of the network. Excuse me. The PCERN operator will have uniform rates, operational standards, and performance requirements. During the life of the system, the PCERN operator will provide ongoing twenty-four-by-seven maintenance as well as updates and upgrades to the radio infrastructure and dispatch center consoles. And as part of the project, we will also be deploying at least seventeen thousand new radios to end-user agencies such as Bellevue Police and Bellevue Fire. This slide shows some of our high-level project milestones. Next Monday night, we will be putting the first part of the PCERN network into service when we transition our nine-one-one dispatch centers to the new network. Once the operations ILA is fully executed, we will begin forming the PCERN operator and expect to have leadership in place by June of next year. I have a next step slides and a couple of more slides that will drill down a little more on the PCERN formation, PCERN operator formation activities. End-user radio deployments are expected to occur from late next year until mid-two thousand and twenty-two. And we expect to conclude the project in December of two thousand and twenty-two. One of the items not shown here, but is important to mention, is the work that we are doing helping building owners transition and retune their in-building communication networks from the current radio system to PCERN. I would like to thank Bellevue Fire Marshal Ken Carlson for his work in this area. Whether you know it or not, he is a true regional leader and he has been invaluable in helping the project focus on the right things regarding this topic. We are very happy to report that as of earlier this summer, we have completed over sixty lease agreements that were needed for the radio sites that were in the original project scope. Recently, we added scope to the project to provide better in-building radio system coverage. This new added scope will add four more leases to our overall portfolio of lease agreements, of which two are now completed and two are in progress. I would like to point out that downtown Bellevue is one of the areas that we will be adding another radio site to improve in-building radio coverage. Another key statistic on this slide is that we have ninety-eight percent of our radio sites either fully constructed or under constructions, excuse me, under construction. Most of the sites still under development are out in the highways, but most of the urban area is now complete. Lastly, we are working with our twelve partners to approve the operations ILA, and ten of the partners have now approved it. This slide shows our top three risks. We have mitigations for all three and are closely monitoring the risks as well as reporting them to our governing board. I do want to just point out that middle risk, I apologize for the acronym in the text there. It stands for, excuse me, DAS stands for Distributed Antenna Systems. This is what I was talking about on the schedule slide just a minute ago, where we need to work with buildings across the region to retune their systems to PCERN. Our budget is in great shape. Most of our remaining project expenditures are fixed by contract, and we are managing the budget very closely. We are confident that we have sufficient funding to meet our commitments. I'd like to shift more specifically to the topic of the interlocal agreement that we're asking you to consider. The operations ILA forms a new governmental nonprofit corporation to own and operate PCERN. It will have four voting members on the Board of Directors. Bellevue would work with the other four EBSCA cities to appoint your member. Police and Fire will have non-voting members on the Board of Directors, and the Board will hire and oversee an executive director who will be responsible for day-to-day operations. Other key elements of the interlocal agreement are listed here. One of the biggest elements is an obligation for the operator to keep the system working at or above its designed level of performance, as well as to ensure that the system is regularly updated and upgraded. Another key component of the interlocal agreement is protections for the parties, including Bellevue, to prevent them from being financially liable for PCERN operations or incurred debts. This slide shows the rates that end users are estimated to pay. Unfortunately, these are tentative figures and will not be finalized until the PCERN operator is formed and adopts a budget. However, they are based on a draft budget that we believe is reflective and realistic to produce these rates. Agencies will not pay rates to PCERN until after the project is substantially complete, which again is projected for December two thousand and twenty-two. I know it can be hard to consider entering into an agreement without certainty around rates and costs. Because of this, we also have some rate stabilization funding to offset rate increases for agencies. The project governance and the PCERN operator will be working to determine how these funds will be applied. But similar to the project budget, things cannot be finalized until the operator exists and is able to make its own policies. I'd like now to move to next steps for forming the PCERN operator. Following signature of the ILA by all twelve parties, we will file articles of incorporation, ask to have appointments made to the Board of Directors, hire the executive director, and finalize the operating budget. The executive director will go through all the steps to set up the workplace, hire staff, and ensure that the operator is ready to take on operations in December of two thousand and twenty-two. Today, we are asking city council to consider authorizing the signing of the PCERN operator interlocal agreement. I understand that that may happen in a week or so. Once signed, the city would be party to the governance of the new network. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you for that presentation. If I can see the council, does anybody have any questions or comments? If you could raise your hand, I can see you. So hold on, I saw one person. I see Councilmember Robertson, and I see councilmembers on. So we'll start with Councilmember Robertson, I saw you first.
Thank you. I don't really have any questions. I know that we're going to be setting the rate structure, and it's based on the number of radios. And that, I mean, this is something that we have been in the process of doing. I remember when we supported this levy in fourteen or fifteen, because this radio system is something that is really important. And this collaboration among the cities and the county is one of the things that government does really well, particularly with regard to public safety. We're all in this together, and we need to work together. Converting the system to digital, it's taken longer and costs more than we expected, but the region supported this with a vote, and I'm very supportive of moving forward with it. That said, I hope that we are well-represented. I've told that we are on the newly-formed board and that the Board will be very thoughtful about making sure that we build this right and make sure that it's fair on the pricing, but most importantly, that it works really well. Because when stuff, people need to communicate countywide and beyond when emergencies happen, and we need to help each other, and this is one of those projects. So I'm really supportive, happy to see it come back on consent. It doesn't need to necessarily come for a specific separate vote. And just wanted to actually talk about this project, about how important it is. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Zion, I'm gonna have you and then Councilmember Lee next. And if you could, in your comments, tell me whether you agree to the idea to put this on consent next. I would appreciate it. And Councilmember Stokes will be next.
Okay, so first, I support this, and so I would support putting it on consent. I think that having connectivity during emergencies is key, and we have known for quite a while that the eight hundred hertz and digital is the way to go. So I absolutely support that. Thank you, David, for letting us know that from a budget standpoint and the capital side that we do have enough contingency to get this complete, because in our memo packet, we identified potential revenue shortfalls as a risk. So it was good to hear that, as you looked at that, that is not an issue. My question on this, though, is, right now, we have twelve parties, and as we stand up this PCERN, we're gonna be able to then look at setting the rates, and we have an allocation formula so that we have fairness. As you look at this in the future, is there any thought that there may be expansion beyond the twelve parties? Or is that twelve parties set in regulations already? Because I'd like to understand that sometimes having more can reduce the overall cost for all of us. So I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, I don't think that having more parties changes the cost portfolio or the rate structure for users. And I say that because those costs are spread over seventeen or eighteen thousand radios and a number of dispatch consoles. So the twelve parties only make up a very small part of that. In terms of adding more members to the Board of Directors or more parties to the interlocal agreement, as we drafted that, the feedback that we got from the cities, the parties, was that they wanted to have this come back to the twelve legislative bodies if membership was contemplated in the future to be changed. So it is possible, there's nothing that prevents it, but it would have to go through all of the cities and King County Council as well again.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thanks for the presentation. I have lots of questions, because I was, you know, a councilmember at the time when we did the process of getting levy to this project. And this obviously is very important, communication, regional cooperation, especially in public safety, no question about it. But it was a very expensive project, very expensive, as we know, it's two hundred and eighty million dollars. And so we need to know what, you know, does the money cover? Can it be done more efficiently, effectively? We know that, at the time when we were talking about the levy to support the system, PCERN, we know that, you know, we have a challenging situation, because Motorola is the only vendor. The system is designed, only one vendor can serve the system. And we know that there's so many communication, a system that's been created over the last ten, five years. There are all kinds of ways of digital and all that stuff. So I'm not sure whether this has been incorporated in this system that it will give us the flexibility, coming up with the most efficient, effective system, and take advantage of the technology improvement, rather than just living with a one-vendor Motorola. When we looked at it, it's already twenty-five years old, and they have to revamp all the radios and doing all the meat whatever it might work. And even that, you know, it's a outdated system in a modern technology that doesn't quite fit. So I was, we were hoping that, you know, we support it because it's very important, necessary, but we had no other choice. So I was hoping that maybe over these ten dozen years, or more actually, yeah, we have come to the point that we have come up with some idea solutions that we can utilize current technology that has a lot of options, other analysis, that if we go forward, you know, we actually can incorporate all this new technologies to make it work much better for everybody. So I don't want to be spending developing system, very impressive. I really like what I showed earlier, you know, I don't want to say it. It's very good, good work, everything you've done is good, so I'm not criticizing it. I'm just hoping that we're not building an old system that continued to be our system. And after twenty years, whatever, we're still going to be improving another old system because we have no other choice. So I just want to be sure that is the case, that we are not going to be hostage to a system that we are going to be stuck for a long time, that we are. So I'd like to hear some explanation, some discussion on the technology itself and what economic opportunity we have to develop into a modern, up-to-date system that we have options, competitions, it will help the rapists. Now, you're talking about how many, three hundred thousand dollars per year for nine hundred radios? Wow, gee, sounds like a lot of money. I'm not sure what it's going to be in the future. That's the first question. This is more important. The second question is the Board of Directors. I didn't get whether the city of Bellevue has a full position or not, is it? I know Seattle has one, King County has one. Does Bellevue have one?
Bellevue will work with the other four cities from EBSCA. And between the five cities, there will be one voting member, very much the way the governance is today in the current network.
Is any consideration, you know, is Bellevue not big enough to be a full member such as Seattle and King County?
Councilmember Lee, we're way over three minutes, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Mendel. I'm gonna ask Mr. Mendel to answer your first question, because he didn't get a chance to do that.
Yeah, I do think that, first of all, that we have state-of-the-art technology. One of the things that we had to do was we did have to enter a long-term contract with Motorola. So we have a twenty-year contract after the project is completed. But in the term, in the sense of obsolescence and, you know, being stuck at the end with something that isn't great, much like we are today, we have a different kind of contract with them. And every other year for the life of this radio system, portions of the hardware and the software will be refreshed. New technology will be brought in, old technology will be taken away. We will keep things alive and well and fully supported throughout the life of this radio system. I do expect that this is probably the last radio system that taxpayers will have to purchase and that at the end of the life of this radio system, new technologies will emerge that will make what we call land-mobile radio obsolete, and we will go in that direction. We're talking about it, thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Stokes next, and then is there anybody else who has a question or comment? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I appreciate the work that's been done and the resolution of this. This is something we've had brought back to council many, many times. And actually, I appreciate Councilmember Lee's bringing up that. Well, I appreciate councilmember Lee's bringing up that question about the. Ongoing and all these others. It's like being in court, like that's question's been asked and answered several times and. I I think you made a good case for. Proceeding along these lines. And one of the things we talked about before was having the flexibility. In that and the governance, government assistance has been something we talked over several times. So I'm comfortable with it. It's. Taken a long, long, long time to get here and it's something we rely on very heavily and. We also made some decisions not to try to be a guinea pig on things that we weren't sure we work and this one does. But have the built in capability to make changes as we go along and. You know, when time comes to change, we'll probably be systems that we have no idea about today. So I'm excited about it. I'm ready to go ahead and like to see it put on consent.
Thank you for that. Okay, deputy mayor, can you make a motion, please?
Certainly, I move the direct staff to return with the resolution authorizing execution of the operator interlocal agreement for adoption of a future consent meeting.
And I think we want to indicate that we'd like it on the consent calendar.
Okay, for adoption on the consent calendar?
Yeah.
Second.
There's a question by councilmember Lee.
I would disagree. I will not support that. I need to have more information. And furthermore, I don't recall that councilmember has been talking about this. You know, we have come, we have not. I don't recall any report previously. Yeah, discussing this topic by this council. And, you know, we need to make sure that obsolescence that's kept building to this system. And I like to, I like what the director Mendel say that, you know, this is the last time we see a radio. So what happens after we finish the radio? What's the system we're going to have? I run, I need to have the question answered. I don't want to get by the end of twenty years, it's a hey, you're stuck.
I hear you, councilmember Lee.
I'm not.
I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I love this. I love this because this was one of the first things we discussed when I got on the council seven years ago. So it's it's been a while in coming, but I remember it because it was, you know. One of the first things we did. And so my my mind was fresh. But we will not put it on consent. So let's change that motion if we can. Let's amend the emotion, the motion, I guess.
For adoption at a future meeting, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second the amendment again.
So is there a second for the?
Second.
Okay, you got that. All right. All those in favor of the amended amendment to bring it back to a council meeting for approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, what's next, Mr. Miyake?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The the next item, the next two items are. Associated with the affordable housing strategy that the city has been working on. This particular matter in front of tonight is regarding initiating work to update the multifamily tax exemption program. Also known as MFT. The MFT program by way of background allows market rate projects to gain a twelve year tax exemption in exchange for providing. Affordable housing as twenty percent of the project's total units. This was last in front of the council back in October of two thousand nineteen. Council extended the MFT program. Specifically to an infinite date, removing the previous expiration date. The council's March twenty, March twenty twenty update from staff on affordable housing strategy progress also included the MFT. Staff is seeking direction to initiate work on updating the existing MFT program. Primarily because the staff believe that updating the details of the program may increase program utilization. Which has been lower than anticipated since the program's most recent update in February of two thousand eighteen. The work program would include analysis, geographic expansion where MFT may be used and updates to the Bellevue City Code. And associated project dominance and as well as agreements associated with the MFT program. So joining us this evening is Matt Cummins. Who is the director, Emile King, assistant director, Tara Johnson, comprehensive planning manager, and Elizabeth. The Ray, who's our senior planner, newest member to the community development department. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Matt.
Thank you, city manager Miyake. Mayor and members of the council, it's good to be back with you here this evening, talking about the multifamily tax exemption program. And what we think is a pretty exciting body of work to get going on. Many of you will remember at the last affordable housing update, there were questions about when we could get going on. This particular programmatic solution to helping encourage the creation of affordable housing. And we indicated we would bring this back in the fall. And so we're back here this evening. By way of introduction, we're going to get into a lot of details about what the proposed work program calls for. But just to remind everybody and the public, the affordable housing strategy has. A couple of main components. One is regulatory. Things that the city can do to incentivize the creation of affordable housing. And the other part is financial incentives, some of which come in the form of direct money and subsidy to help create. And new builder preserve units. And some are working with state programs like the multifamily tax exemption program. To help developers that build and preserve these units, they get a tax exemption. So at the last discussion, the council asked about some facets of the program. And asked if we were to be able to put together a work program, if we evaluate those things, maybe we'll get better participation. So what we're going to do this evening is walk through the proposed scope of work that we're looking to initiate tonight. And move into the the first quarter of next year to bring back recommendations for the council. And so we're hoping at the end of the presentation tonight, you'll give us that direction. And we're going to go through the different topical areas that we plan to study over the next few months, including the public outreach with. Our development partners and the different stakeholders that are participatory in this. So with that, I am going to hand it over to our staff to walk you through that scope of work and we'll all be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Great, thank you, Mac. And Tara, if you could move that along to the next slide.
Yes, so. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, deputy mayor, Newen House. And members of the council. City manager Miyake and staff that are present as well as the public. Thank you for that introduction, Mac. So the purpose of this evening's presentation. Is to essentially launch expansion of the MFT program as Mac indicated. There's been some ongoing discussion with city council, which occurred earlier this year and even prior to that. And Elizabeth Direct, our senior planner in our division in the comp planning team is. The primary project manager for this overseeing a lot of the analysis. And so she's going to be walking you through several facets of the program. I'm just going to walk you through some of the components of the agenda for this evening and then I'll hand it over to Elizabeth. So we're going to start off with providing a little bit of background. Essentially providing the council and public present here today. A little bit of information about how our existing program functions, where that emanates from. And how it's been used over the last few years since we've initiated the MFT program. And then we're also going to look at potential opportunities if we expand the program. To different areas of the city, we're going to look at where it applies right now. And then also look at some of the components of the scope that we're looking at as part of our analysis and efforts. And look for feedback from the council, of course, and then talk about our timeline for the update. And with that, I'm going to hand things over to Elizabeth to walk you through the program.
Thank you, Tara. That was a great overview. So before we dive into the kind of update itself, I just want to give a quick overview of the program as it stands today. So the MFT program is based off of state legislation and it allows quite a bit of flexibility for. Local jurisdictions who adopts the program. And so there are a few things that are required. One of them is for the program that that we've adopted, having it be a twelve year. Exemption from the residential. Part of the taxes on the property. And for our program, we require for those twelve years that twenty percent of the units are affordable at a variety of of AMI levels. And this program is available only in specific parts of the city. So the state legislation requires. That these residential target areas, which you can see in gray on the screen. Be identified in in the code and that is, those are the only areas where. The program may be used. And so we have identified those areas as shown. And that's kind of based on mixed use areas. You can see our growth corridor in there as well as a small area over in Crossroads. And you can see the area down in East Gate. Where, you know, we expect multifamily growth to happen. And that is kind of something that that can be updated by the local jurisdictions. And something that's important about Bellevue's program is that we also allow an overlap with our incentive programs, which are. At eighty percent of area median income. And so when those two programs are allowed to overlap. One unit that would otherwise be at eighty percent AMI based on the incentive program can actually have deeper affordability through the MFT program. For the twelve years that that program remains in effect. So if you go to the next slide, Tara, we can take a look at kind of what those AMI levels look like across the different. Residential target areas. And so those are listed out here. And we actually have a program that varies based on location. This is for a number of reasons, but primarily. It's because of that overlap with our incentive program, which varies through each of these areas. And it also accounts for some of the kind of market differences in each of these. Residential target areas. But some requirements are the same across all of these areas. So those are the ones that are listed at the top there. We have a family size unit requirement. And then we also have a requirement that if the units are especially small, they require deeper affordability. And then on the next slide, we're going to start going into a little bit about how the program has been utilized so far. And so we have had two projects use our MFT program since it was adopted in two thousand fifteen. Both of those projects have actually kind of come. Into creation since the the update in early two thousand eighteen. And so we updated a few minor things in two thousand eighteen, especially in the downtown residential target area. And that is where both of these projects occurred. And to and to kind of give you a little bit of of understanding of what that means to, there are two projects out of about twenty projects that. Could have qualified to use the MFT program since the program's adoption in two thousand fifteen. So we're seeing just under a ten percent utilization rate based on number of units. And that that doesn't quite line up with what we were hoping that this program would be able to to produce. And so in the two thousand seventeen affordable housing strategy. We estimated about sixty five units per year would be achieved through the MFT program. So if you take a look since. The update in two thousand eighteen, we're getting a little bit less than half of that. And. While we do have quite a few units in the pipeline that we're hoping will come online next year. We are seeing lower utilization than we were expecting. And that is part of the reason that we are looking to update the program. So on the next slide. So one of the ways that we're looking at updating the the program is based on the geographic locations. We've heard from council in previous discussions. That there's an interest in looking at a geographic expansion in order to increase program utilization. And there's a few different ways we could do that. One of the ways is to kind of find targeted areas to add new residential target areas. Across the city. There are some very, you know, clear solutions to that, such as expanding the Wilberton boundary with the the upcoming update. And adding East Main as well. But there are also maybe other mixed use areas where we expect to see development in coming years where we could also expand to new RTAs. And then on the next slide, we're also looking at if you wanted to expand the program to all areas of the city. Where currently multifamily development is allowed by zoning, that would be all of the areas that are highlighted in red in this graphic. And so you can see that that kind of highlights lots of different areas across the city. Some of those are mixed use zoning areas and kind of nodes, and others are very neighborhood residential areas. And if you kind of take a look at where all of those black dots are on this graphic, those are representing. Construction permits that have been given out since the program was adopted in two thousand fifteen. And those are primarily located in the existing residential target areas, which means that most of the development that Bellevue has been seeing. Of multifamily development is already occurring in the areas where the MFT program is permitted. Which would mean that there there might be some other updates to the program that we would also like to look at if we're going to be increasing program utilization. There are also other ways we can increase utilization with some expansion. There may be areas. Where we might have further development. Coming up in in upcoming years that is not reflected by these permits. And so that will be another area where we're hoping to look at as part of our scope. On the next slide. So as part of that scope, I just wanted to remind everyone kind of what what our goal is here. We're really trying to increase program utilization. Create more affordable housing units and make it easier to to increase that 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 total. And the state legislation also requires that those affordable housing units be kind of a commensurate balance with the tax exemption itself. So we'll be looking at both of those sides of of that. And then on the next slide. I'm just going to walk through what the proposed scope itself is. So we'll start out with some outreach. We really want to start looking at where there are barriers to the existing program, especially looking at all those dots that did not utilize the MFT program, why that happened. And how to keep that from happening in the future. We'll also potentially be doing outreach to any residents in areas where we might be looking at expanding the geographic reach of the program. And and the community at large. And then in addition, we'll be looking, as I mentioned, to expanding the program geographically and in a number of ways as described. And then we'll also be looking at a number of kind of details of the program itself where we would like to. Understand what the best combination of program features is. So there's, as I mentioned, a lot of flexibility in the way that this program can be be utilized. And so here's a kind of some examples of things that that we might be looking at. Those AMI thresholds that are currently different in each residential target area could be adjusted. The way that the program interacts with the incentive program could be adjusted and those might be partnered with with one another. And then we also might be looking at some of the unit mix requirements, that that family size requirement, what percentage that is, how that works. And also looking at where in the building these these units are required to be. And then we'll also be looking at the program administration in general and just understanding what the experience is from a number of of experiences. Then Tara, on the next slide, I'll be going through the proposed schedule. So we're planning to come back to council with a recommendation in early of next year. And in order to get there, we're planning on doing that outreach that I mentioned. Develop a few different options and determine what that best combination of update possibilities is. And then we'll come back with that recommendation in early next year. And then we will be required to have a public hearing if there's any changes to those residential target areas. Which would let us adopt a new code sometime in the second quarter of two thousand twenty one. So with that, I'm going to open it to any questions that you have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm going to call on councilmembers in this order, councilmember Barksdale, followed by Robertson, Zion, Newen House, Stokes, Lee, and then myself. So starting with councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you. And excuse me, thanks to staff for the presentation and also the analysis that was in the packet. I just had one quick question. I know you're going to reach out, do the outreach piece and engage on. What are the challenges or barriers with the current program? Any thoughts based on the analysis of what's working and other municipalities that we might consider? Just given the preliminary analysis that you've already done.
Elizabeth, do you want to address that? I can, I think we have a slide that captures that a little bit. So we could, we could go there.
Yeah, if you want to kind of slide to that, I think it's two slides after this. This just kind of gives you an idea of what kind of breadth of options there are. We have not yet determined, you know, which of these options that we will, you know, determine is best for Bellevue. But this gives you an idea of the types of things that we could be looking at. You know, it, it, these things are all kind of really interrelated. So, you know, programs that allow an overlap with inclusionary program. Really changes what those AMI levels are. And, you know, what other programs are available is really important as well. So there's kind of all these different features, but those four things I mentioned on that last slide are really the areas that. That we've heard, you know, from the the feedback we've gotten so far are definitely areas that we'd like to look at.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to add that, you know, each from our from our initial analysis and. Even some conversations that we've had with other jurisdictions as well as, you know, Arch, that's very familiar with, obviously, how MFT functions in different jurisdictions. Particularly on the east side. Every jurisdiction seems to have a very different approach to MFT. So I just wanted to highlight that for council. So there's no one size fits all. That seems to, you know, function for different, different areas of the Puget Sound.
But the cities that are doing really well have mandatory inclusionary? Is that what I'm reading?
Um, yes, a few of the cities on the east side, so Kirkland and Redmond both have mandatory provisions and have had those provisions in place for some time. Kirkland has also had MFT in place for a fairly long period of time, whereas Redmond has recently adopted MFT. So as I said, every every city has a has approached it a little differently.
Okay, councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I'm really appreciate this coming back. I know I was very eager to look at expanding our MFT to more areas of the city. And I'm glad you're looking at that. I I'd like to see what it looks like if we put it everywhere where multifamily housing is allowed. So the geographic applicability, I think that a lot of the questions you're asking are really good. I I also thought that the letter from many of the major employers that we got today via email, if that hasn't been turned over to staff, it needs to be because all the things in that letter need to be part of what is answered. So I'll just go really briefly through some of it and then add something that wasn't in the letter. One is, I think we need to look at the AMI levels because we want to make sure that we can have, we need more housing, number one, and we need more affordable housing, you know, also, number one. So we need both. So having a mix of AMI levels where people can get the MFT for their projects might be really helpful. It also helps with dispersing the lower incomes units in among ones that are a higher AMI or even market rate, and that tends to be better for the project. It tends to make more sense for builders. Second, the duration. I know that there was a bill that's been talked about in Olympia to extend, to allow cities to extend the MFT period from twelve to twenty-four years. I definitely want to follow that. But hand in hand with that bill was one, and let me look at the bill number, it was House Bill 2950. What happens is if you don't book the new construction value in the year that it's built, you wait until the end of the period. That affects the city's ability to collect revenue on property taxes for, you know, which makes perhaps the twelve-year or the twenty-four-year much less appealing to cities, especially with our budgets being down in COVID. So the bill that I mentioned, 2950, would have allowed cities to book in the new construction value to their total AV in year one, like it is done with all the other projects, while people still have the MFT, which means that cities' revenues aren't suffering, but but the developer still is getting the benefit of the project. So I think that that's something that I would like to really add to our ledge agenda. It's something we need to watch, but I think it's also something we need to advocate for. And it's one of those things that the state doesn't have to give us money, but it helps us provide incentive for affordable housing without damaging our own budgets, even worse than COVID already does. So that's something I'd like to really follow up on. Finally, I think that something that's really important is the non-codified provisions that Arch is using, where they're requiring things that our code does not, like the one free parking space to be built in, a lot of oversight over the leases, which is making it a lot harder for developers and property managers to be able to take advantage of this, makes it really hard to comply with. So I'd like to have some transparency as we move through this study and it comes back to council, what we are requiring and what we are not. I don't want to have something that Arch is going to require that is not in our code. I don't think that's fair. It's not fair to us for getting our affordable housing vision met. And it's not fair to developers who want to take advantage of the MFT to then come in and find out, wait a second, I thought it penciled, but now it doesn't because I've got to provide all this parking at no cost. So and, you know, it's also consistent with our some of our vision to make sure that people can use alternative modes and maybe not have as much parking required. So I'd like to make sure that we do look at that as part of the study. And I apologize if I didn't catch, when is this coming back to council?
We're coming back to council on early of 2021.
Great. I'm super excited. I hope that we can look at this really thoroughly, work with our stakeholders and bring it back so that we can have it in place for when next year's construction schedule begins. Thanks.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the thorough information in the packet. I really appreciate it, especially the comparisons with cities. My question is, did we look at cities outside of our local area as well to understand if there are MFT programs that they're using and look at what other strategies they might have had that have created success? Because I can see looking at even just the three neighboring cities that have mandatory inclusionary, that they're getting more housing. And at one point, Bellevue actually had that before it changed. So I think it's important for us to maybe look a little broader than just our local area to understand what options there may be available. My second point is the one about ownership. So is that a provision where after a certain number of years, there's an opportunity for renters to get into homeownership? Because I think that's another area where we need to look at housing affordability and not just as renters, but the potential to actually own the own unit and be able to build generational wealth. So that's another area that I'd like to understand. And then just wanted to say on the microhousing, I really appreciate that and having deeper affordability because I I think that not everyone wants to be in a much larger unit. So the ability to have three hundred square feet, in fact, many countries, three hundred square feet is a big unit. So having that is is a big deal. And then I support expanding the residential target areas. And really, I I would want to understand what the downside would be to expanding it to all of the multifamily zoning. So we aren't coming back and looking at these over and over again if the I if the goal is to make sure that interspersed within our community is multiple is different levels of housing so that we are a community that's interspersed and not just certain areas that have deeply affordable housing versus, you know, an intermix. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, great presentation to Mac and Mill, Thara and Elizabeth. Elizabeth, welcome to City Bellevue. I think it's the first time you're presenting in front of us, so great job tonight. Yeah, I mean, my colleagues have touched on a lot of things that I agree on. And certainly, you know, this is critical, this MFT program force. I'd also like to see this expanded to those additional RTAs and wherever multifamily housing is is owned to to have the MFT in place. One thing that did strike me, as Councilmember Robertson had mentioned earlier, about the the non-codified requirements about the free parking and also about the new MFT lease renewals, which gets me thinking, are there any other non-codified requirements beyond these two? These two might be the most onerous, but are there other non-codified requirements, which is really hampering this 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 program from truly flourishing? The, you know, again, I think talk about expansion is important, and I think we're all supportive of that, at least the ones who have spoken so far. However, if we can't get rid of some of these onerous requirements, we're just not going to see as many developers take advantage of the FTE as as they may have. So I really think we need to concentrate there first before we look at expansion. And then, you know, just a final comment, I just really think that, you know, the MFT and the parking reduction are probably the two most critical things to developing additional affordable housing, workforce housing in our city. So with 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 that in mind, that's where we need to go, and that's what we need to address. And certainly look forward to this coming back to the council. And again, great presentation and look forward to hearing more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I'll add my thanks to the presentations and all and looking into this. This is pretty exciting. We, you know, it's been a few years now since 2017. It's nice to be doing some updates, and I hope we're looking at things that will improve what we have in place now. The and I appreciate a lot of the comments I was going to make, or I'll certainly go along with the Councilmember Robertson, Robertson brought these forward, and I think they're they're important things. I'm glad to see council members generally supporting an even more aggressive push on affordable housing in various ways. And that that's very encouraging because every day we go by, it's getting more difficult, more people needing. So and when we get to the other part, I want to talk about the the goals and stuff. But back to this. On the Arch piece, it seems, I mean, we have to take, we have to work with Arch and C because I'm sure they're applying a rule across the board with all the other cities they're working with. So we need to look into that and why they're requiring these requirements. And I agree that we should, if there's some that are in in hampering our approach, that we need to look at that. It is interesting, the other cities that are involved with Arch are doing a better job in terms of numbers at this point. But so that's a that's a good thing to look at and get some uniformity there is good. I think the the things that I haven't really heard is or hear this sometimes, the idea that we're doing what's best for Bellevue, where the program is. I I would like to have a little better delineation of that and then why why it's different for Bellevue as opposed to, say, Kirkland or something. I think that sometimes that's easy to justify something we're doing. And I just kind of think about that, looking at at proven techniques across, you know, many cities is very valuable. Now, you're you're doing that, so don't get too hung up on, because I don't know, we really don't have a definition of what's best for Bellevue and the same. So and that's, I know that wasn't a real overarching thing you were talking about. And I think what you're looking at is in these other cities is what's different from, you know, from us and why they're making progress, and and that that's big help. The last thing is that I really do think that we need to take, and Councilmember Zahn mentioned this, the more kind of global approach in Bellevue of places we can find to put multifamily housing, you know, all sorts. I think we're we're getting past the kind of state or the the traditional multifamily, and we're looking at different configurations of that and how it can fit into the neighborhoods around them. I mean, most neighborhoods already have a lot of, you know, apartments and everything else around them. So I think this is a great program. We're going forward. I'm really excited about it. But I'm hoping that we're going to set some goals that are really, you know, big BHAD goals and push. When we get to the conversation, I think the twenty-four hundred we have now is inadequate. And I think what you're looking at is something that will help us reach the need that we're looking at and being flexible and being not, you know, putting things in little boxes. We're going to do thirty, fifty percent over here, eighty percent over here. I like that idea of having it mixed so that the the complexes will be better, the facilities will be better. And I think in terms of community and and the human beings living in them, it'll be better. So you have a big job in front of you, but I think you've got a really great start on this. And I'm looking forward to you you bringing it back. You know, the the couple of things that seem to be kind of bogging it down, we can cure those. Don't wait, though, until we fix that before you start moving on to the others. I I think it's important to move. And I'm looking forward to reports and maybe some in the interim before, obviously, in the middle of 2021. But, you know, really, really push this, be be as creative as you can, be as nimble as you can, because this is this is one of the great crises we're going to have, and this pandemic has not helped us at all. So good work and best to you in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's commendable for staff to realize that we are only meeting fifty percent of our goal. So I think you are on the right track to look at more analysis and getting more data and figuring out how to improve the situation. So I think you're on the right track. The broad, you know, stroke to look at it is that you probably should be looking, talking to the developers. And why are we not doing more than we can? You know, the people who are building it, you know, that's the, you know, proof, the pudding is eating it. And so, you know, I think council members will give you a lot of ideas, suggestions. And so I hope that you have more. And but, you know, I had a real reality joke this weekend. I I visited an apartment right next to Downton Park, and two thousand square feet, they're renting from eight thousand dollars to twelve thousand dollars a month, a month. And amazing, you know, people are paying for it. It's it's all fully rented. It's amazing. So we know what the need is, you know, for the housing. It is a big, big, big thing. And my one thing I want to put it out, you know, is we we need to have a perhaps a group of folks, a committee of some sort that comprise of developers that will be building in in Bellevue. And what would talk to them, have them give us ideas, give you ideas? What would it take to have more, you know, affordable housing? This MFT program, you know, how how do we make it more workable, attractive? One thing that has been discussed already, Councilmember Robertson and you in the house mentioned, and the example is Arch, you know, they have some encoded requirements. You know, I would probably brought it up because and and because somebody, you know, it was mentioned that, well, maybe there are some reasons to do that. And I I believe Arch saw it as a lot of good work. But in this particular case, you know, there are a couple of projects that, you know, have got exemptions for parking requirement. But when you don't, when you have unco- un- encoded requirements and only people who, you know, take the initiative of figuring out how to get exemptions can do it, the majority of the folks, you know, especially business people, developers, they they're going to be shut out of it. They're not going to be, they 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 would not know that there is such a thing as getting exemptions or going to the trouble of getting exemptions. So I think we need to be, make sure that whatever we have, it's it's reasonable. It's something that we know it's going to work, and it's going to be transparent across the board so that they have certainty that, yeah, this is something they want to pursue. Because it takes a lot of work, a lot of effort to prepare, to decide whether you want to do this or not, you know. So I think that's important, and there are many, many other examples. So be sure, you know, talk to our former council member, Kevin Wallace. You know, he would be a great resource to talk to, you know. So second, I would suggest is that we need to make sure that we it's the cost of building these things. That's like killer, you know. And how can we still look at, because that's not be mentioned, that's why I would have mentioned it. All the others been discussed. So how can we make the cost lower? How can we do it? You know, that that's the question. So I would just end it there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Okay, so I I appreciate all my fellow council members' comments. They reflect a lot of the things that I've been thinking about as well. One thing that I'm curious about, and maybe you can answer this tonight, is what is, what would the map look like if we were to focus this around all TOD as opposed to RTAs? So that might be something you have to come back to us with, but I'm really curious if we could focus this more on all TOD, including BRT, Bus Rapid Transit. Because really, that's where we want to focus, I think, our affordable housing, to make it so people don't have to have cars and can have a more affordable lifestyle as well. But that's a that's a question I have. I have the same concerns about the Arch policies in making sure they're not too burdensome for the developers, although they don't seem to be for Kirkland and Redmond, and they're in Arch as well, so that's curious. We've talked about the TOD zone in Bellred and how that really has the epicenter of a projected station and has never been corrected to the actual station. So I'm hoping that we can sooner than later make that correction on the map. So when we were talking about TOD in Bellred, it's actually centered around the Light Rail Station. And I would like to explore what it would look like to do mandatory inclusionary housing. You can see in the region that that's been very successful, and there's been a lot of development using this. And I know, as Councilmember Zahn said, we had that in the past, and I know it was very successful in creating a lot of eighty percent AMI. And I'm interested in the layering of, you know, something that incentivized eighty percent AMI layered with another incentive. 80% AMI layered with another incentive that could bring it down to a lower affordability. So that's something I'd be interested in looking at. And then Councilmember Zahn said something that uh, is intriguing to me. Um, have we ever talked about, has there ever been a discussion about rent to own with the um, MFTE program? I wonder if any other city has done that. So you could, if, if there has been, maybe you could bring that back. And I will just say uh, the cost to the city of not collecting property taxes on these affordable units is miniscule. As far, I did a, an analysis of that in the, before we ever proposed having an MFTE in Bellevue. And it just seems like that's a very miniscule cost to the city when we don't collect on those few units. So maybe an analysis of that because uh, you could make them permanently affordable or at 12 years, when they fall to market rate, they're already kind of affordable because it's more affordable because they're more, uh, they're older units that inherently cost less than a newer unit. So I don't know the benefit of doing more than 12 years of MFTE, but I'd be curious to know the impact of that. So have you got enough to bring back to us?
I think we've got a, a lot, Mayor. Um, I think uh, just a couple of points of clarification might be good for the council. Um, and I'll just kind of go backwards, starting with your comments, Mayor. Yes, uh, we will absolutely take a look at the cost impact to the city. Each time we've looked at MFTE and any potential lost revenue, uh, the council has generally said, hey, the policy impact of the positivity of getting the affordable units far outweighs the relatively de minimis amount of tax revenue that would be generated during that 12-year span. Um, but what I would also mention is, because there were some comments here about the 12-year, the nature of the 12-years. Many of our uh, developers are taking advantage of the land use incentive system as well, which carries a permanency to the, the unit itself. So we want to be careful about projects that say, just take care of MFTE. And what does that look like over the long term? A lot of the units that are getting built are actually participating in the land use code incentive system, which has a different duration component. And we'll try to make those clear, you know, when we bring the whole program proposal back to you. Um, a couple of things also came up though, that just from a scope standpoint, probably want to talk about. One is, uh, there was some discussion about micro units and there was some discussion about inclusionary housing. Those are things that are actually contemplated in the affordable housing strategy and have very clear policy direction on them right now. So on the um, on the micro units, that's a strategy that you'll hear about in terms of the timing in our next update, just with all the strategies. Uh, but that, that involves a land use code update and some things that uh, we're working with our development services department about when it will come back to the council. But that's, that's coming. Inclusionary housing is something that came up uh, as a foundational element of the affordable housing strategy. And the council adopted policy to use incentive based. So um, it might be rather than to have that as part of your MFTE discussion and launch. If the council wants to think about that, that would probably be more in the affordable housing strategy just overall. Is that something you all want to, to talk about or not, as compared to layering it into the MFTE discussion? And then lastly, um, I think just one point of clarification on things like the quote unquote parking that has been required. Those are things that come up as requirements that uh, appear in a covenant. And uh, though most of our development partners uh, end up talking to Arch staff based on how we're resourced and how much total staff we have at City of Bellevue, it's actually City of Bellevue that's approving uh, the requirement to have parking in the covenant. And it's something we've been looking at for some time. Um, and I've talked to a number of the folks that were on that uh, letter, that signed the letter about this exact issue. And so as the city is looking to now require significantly less than one stall per unit, the idea of treating all affordable units in the same way you treat all units, just in general. Obviously now we're making a conscious decision and not every unit comes with a parking stall. So therefore, we probably don't have the same relationship of treating all, all the, because some people just simply don't come with cars at all. So we'll definitely take a look at that. Uh, I'll just note for the council, um, we have, and the, the authority actually rests within the community development department. I have approved a project uh, that decouples parking in the downtown um, and does not add that into the cost of the project, primarily because of its relationship to transit. But certainly acknowledge that um, the context of how we go about that decision-making is probably not as clear as it could be for the developers. So we're going to start that outreach process and continue our dialogue, particularly with our large corporate sponsors. Microsoft has been very active, wanting to talk to us about some of this and, and same thing with Amazon. So anyways, um, hopefully that just adds a little more context for some things we've already been doing and stuff is coming up.
Terrific. Okay. Well, um, so there's a motion to direct staff to initiate work on updating the MFTE program consistent with the work program as detailed in this memo and incorporating the comments that you've heard tonight. Is there a motion to do that, please?
I moved. Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So I think, I think you've got your direction and um, we're looking forward to seeing this in February, I think, of next year. Thank you very much. Mr. Miyaki, I think we have the, the next thing you want to introduce.
Thank you. Thank, yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'll just be very, be very brief and, because this next one um, resides with Mac as well. And it's really the, about the Affordable Housing Strategy Implementation. Um, the, um, the council has been asked to be briefed twice yearly on our Affordable Housing Strategy Implementation. Um, as you recall, this was the uh, strategy that was adopted back in June of 2017. Um, the briefing tonight will include um, progress since the strategy adoption in implementing the actions of the strategy and achieving new and preserved affordable housing. Uh, we were last in front of council, I believe, back around March of 2020. Um, for tonight, no action is uh, being sought. This is really an informational briefing for the council. Um, again, to be compliant with, coming back to you at least twice per year. With that, um, joining us this evening again is Matt Cummins, the Director, and Neil King is also joining us as the Assistant Director, Tara Johnson and Janet LeWine, uh, all from the Community Development Department. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mac to tee this up. Mac?
Uh, thank you, City Manager Miyaki. Uh, so in the last update, we were asking for uh, council direction to initiate a specific implementation uh, strategy within the Affordable Housing Plan. Uh, this is our twice a year update on the progress on all of the strategies that are contained within the plan. Uh, and council will, will start to get used to seeing a similar format in each of these updates where we talk about the number of units created, the effectiveness of each of the implementation strategies. Uh, and for those that haven't yet been fully implemented, the timing of when those things are likely to come back. So we're entering year four after adoption of the strategy. It's a 10-year strategy designed to get between 2,000 and 2,500 units. Um, several of you made comments during the last presentation. Um, you know, as we look at this becoming such an enormous need, uh, you know, how are we looking at how we're defining success? Uh, it's sort of a theme that I, that I've heard from folks in the community and from our conversations individually and collectively here with the council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tara and Janet and we'll walk you through uh, what's been going on the last six months and where we're headed in the next six.
Okay, I can, I can be picking this up. This is Janet LeWine. And um, as Mac mentioned, there's no direction tonight. We're just happy uh, to be here and uh, present to council an update on the city's affordable housing strategy. Um, next slide. So the agenda um, is a similar format to uh, what we bring to you in every six-month update. Uh, we give you some context for the Affordable Housing Strategy. How many units of affordable housing have been achieved since our last update? Our, since the strategy was adopted? And the effectiveness of the programs that have been implemented and our progress in implementing those actions in the Affordable Housing Strategy. Next. So council adopted the Affordable Housing Strategy in June 2017. But the 21 actions of the strategy are being adopted over a phased multi-year work program. In uh, somewhat more than three years, significant progress has been made on several important tools, including adoption of affordable housing incentives in East Gate and downtown. Uh, we've seen delivery of affordable homes increase fourfold over our historical averages before the Affordable Housing Strategy. And uh, we expect more progress as we implement the full suite of tools. Next slide. So this table shows uh, the over 1,200 uh, units of affordable housing that we have realized since June of 2017, when we adopted the Affordable Housing Strategy. Um, in some tools, we've achieved more units than targeted, especially in preservation of existing older apartments. Next slide. And this table shows over this, over 600 affordable housing units that are currently in the pipeline. Um, through a combination of market incentives like multifamily tax exemption, uh, land use incentives in downtown and Bellred and uh, direct subsidy uh, funding through Arch um, and making of public surplus property available for affordable housing. Next. And uh, again, this is our pipeline, but uh, just on Friday, we had great news on one pipeline project. Sound Transit announced talks with Bridge Housing to develop a mixed-use project in Bellred, south of Sound Transit's operation and maintenance facility. The proposed project includes 500 units of housing, including more than 280 affordable units for people with incomes between 30% and 80% of area median income. Uh, for more than six years, the city and Sound Transit have been working collaboratively to uh, recover the lost development potential of the operation and maintenance site through redevelopment of nearly seven acres of city and Sound Transit-owned uh, surplus property. The bridge proposal also includes over 400,000 uh, square feet of office space, active ground floor retail and resident, and resident amenities and a public park. So this is a big whoop-whoop, 280 units of affordable housing in this proposal. Next slide. This table, which is also Attachment A in the council memo, shows our monitoring of which adopted actions are achieving affordable units. In the bottom, if you can see of the third column, um, it shows the expected yield that when the strategy is fully implemented, uh, that the actions of the strategy can yield um, 2,500 affordable units over 10 years. Um, for actions that have been implemented, uh, performance has been consistent with the expected yield for uh, for many of these actions, for preservation, for direct subsidy and for land use incentives in Bellred and downtown. As Elizabeth mentioned before, we were noticing that the um, ex- multifamily tax exemption was not ex- yielding expected as expected. So that's why we're going back into that program. Um, next slide. So this shows the implemented actions since 2017. I'd like to call out also how much has been done in just the last six months, including um, well, council tonight initiating a second review of the multifamily tax uh, exemption program. Um, council's funding in July uh, through Arch of East Gate Shelter, which will bring 100 beds of shelter and the Polaris at East Gate, which is 300 units of affordable housing. Um, council initiated uh, a couple of months ago, the C1 action to provide a density bonus for affordable housing on faith, nonprofit housing and public surplus, surplus properties. And uh, and I guess we can take that uh, Bridge Housing proposal as a, as a, as a good action that we've achieved in the last six months through our work. Next slide. This is another view of an updated timeline of the Affordable Housing Strategy actions with a focus on the actions that will increase or preserve affordable units. Uh, the last few actions, I would say um, the, the ones below the uh, uh, X3 dwelling unit update, those um, are, have estimated timelines because they're out in the future or they have not been included yet in, in the work program, you know, for CD or for, or for development services. And we can come back to this with council questions. It's a lot to take in. Next slide. I think we've covered a lot of this, but uh, many of the actions that forward the Affordable Housing Strategy will be implemented through cross-department efforts. Um, and uh, although this shows both current and upcoming work programs, it does not show all the additional housing efforts that are going on in the city, uh, both in community development and other departments, including administrate, ministering our existing affordable housing programs, uh, working with our partner Arch on uh, the East Side Affordable Housing Trust Fund and support for our, our regional affordable housing partners, uh, PSRC, working with King County Joint Recommendations Committee and the uh, Affordable Housing Committee of the GMPC. And last, let's go to the summary. So progress to date, you know, both what we've achieved, the over 1,200 units and the pipeline. It indicates that we can achieve beyond our target of 2,500 to make a greater impact of addressing affordable housing need. Um, the units achieved each year, we expect to increase as the actions are adopted and implemented. We have learned the importance of implementing a variety of strategies and affordabilities and building partnerships, including business and philanthropy, to achieve more than we can do on our own. I think it's unexpected how much the uh, partnerships with uh, business have resulted in preservation, for example, of affordable housing units this, this uh, last few years. So uh, next slide. Again, no direction is required. Um, this is an informational briefing and I'm happy to take questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to count the call on council members in this order. Councilmember Stokes, followed by Lee, Zahn, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Barkseal, Robertson, and then me. So Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is very exciting uh, to see where we moved since 2017 and uh, you know, putting the plan in place and, and working on this. Um, so I'm, I'm just very excited uh, with this going forward. I did have a couple of things to uh, ask uh, or talk about. One is on the numbers, a little bit curious why we're including uh, homeless shelter numbers in the affordable housing uh, goals. Uh, those are, I mean, they're related, but they're, you know, part of the thing with house, affordable housing, um, is that we want to build that so we can keep people, bring people out of the shelter and keep people from going into a shelter. And I, I just think that kind of uh, it's, it's not a lot, but it's just not clean in terms of looking at our, our goals of, of affordable housing, I mean, people moving into a place and being there.
Okay.
Uh, so I'd like to take a look at that. The other is the goal itself. Um, this is very exciting. It doesn't, uh, it happens from time to time, but to have some goals uh, that you set four years ago in a certain, different time period um, seem to be well within reaching and going past that. And at the same time, being in effect in four years, even more overwhelmed with the need for affordable housing. Um, you know, we're having a big, big increase in people moving into Bellevue. Um, I mean, a lot of them can afford those houses that are apartments that people mentioned earlier, that cost a heck of a lot. But there are a lot of people and that, you know, coming in uh, to work in service injuries, injuries and everything else. And so the workforce housing is very important and more and more people because of COVID are having trouble, losing homes. Um, the, the demand for affordable housing, I think, is just ballooned. So I would uh, you know, like to see us take a look at this and, and be uh, stretch yourself again. And uh, we can pat ourselves on the back, we're getting close to 2,500. But um, it kind of tells me that maybe we underestimated that time, which is, is okay. It's nice to hit a goal and hit it. But I really would like you to, to really look at those two things. Uh, taking the uh, the shelter, temporary shelter numbers out and uh, think about it. What would you, you know, what would be a, a stretch goal for us? Let's look at uh, what we can do, because we're making some changes now in the, in the uh, you know, in our last conversation, some things that are, will help us uh, increase um, building of affordable housing. And we're doing a lot more work in, in partnership. We're having uh, an Arch program that is revitalized and, and I think stronger. Uh, we have a lot more going on with King County and we have a lot. We have a lot more going on with King County, and we have a lot, lot more going on with the business community who really understand and want to help make this happen. So I think we have an opportunity in front of us to be, to really push out there and come for some of these, you know, really bigger, bigger goals to meet the need. Because we don't want to get through at some point and say, well, we got 2,500 or 2,700, and hey, we did it, so we can coast. I just, we're going to have to really step this up immediately. And the good news is, we have a program, a process, goals, strategies to meet that. So let's put the, you know, the rubber, the road, the car on the road and get it going a little better. So that's my wish and appreciation for the work you're doing. And a lot of this is because staff has just done a tremendous job of putting this all together and pulling it together. So let's think big. Let's come out of this pandemic and ready to roar and serve an increasing need for affordable housing in Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one thing I'd like to add is, well, we heard previously, rent to own. I don't know how much we have discussed, or if that needs to be looked at in more detail. So beside that, remember, rent to own. What kind of program can we have on that? Other than that, I have no more questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. And Janet, I just want to really appreciate your steadfast work in really this, this area of increasing affordable housing. I think there's an urgency to it that we need to keep pushing. I agree with the comments that have been made previously. I think that job and housing balance is one that we really need to pay attention to because we are, more jobs are coming to Bellevue. So I like the fact that we have a variety of strategies. We're looking at partnerships, preservation. I think that we want to make sure that we're really focusing on that. A couple of areas that I did have, I do want to make sure that we are also moving with urgency, and that is that if I look at the count from the last three years, there's only been 32 ADUs that have been permitted in Bellevue. So I think we need to look at, you know, what do we need to do to really look at that? Because it is also an opportunity for the people living in to have that as an option to be able to do an ADU where maybe the grandparents are moving into the ADU and their kids with grandkids are moving into the main unit. So I think there's that. I would also like to make sure that we're focused on the 130th TOD and where, what are we going to be doing to make progress on that? I understand we're making some progress with the faith communities. I'd like to understand more about what's been happening with that engagement and whether we're starting to see some things move, because they're dispersed throughout the city. And then I appreciate my colleagues supporting my comment about the rent to own, because I do think that that is a whole piece of the affordability is to make sure that we're not only looking at renting, that we have a pathway to generational wealth. So that's important to me. And just glad to see that we're projecting to be over 2,500 units over 10 years. So just like my former colleague said, or previous colleague, let's look at whether we can be looking at another stretch goal so that we can make even more progress, because the need is definitely there even within the last three years in terms of that increase. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Janet, thanks so much for the great update and the presentation tonight. Like my colleagues, I share a lot of the enthusiasm of this going forward. You know, I don't think we should, you know, look down upon hitting this goal or going to hit this goal 2,400, 2,500 affordable housing. That's fantastic. There has been conversation about what should that new goal be? Or what should we, you know, be looking at going past that? So my first question is, how do we get to that 2,500 goal? What was the criteria or what was the model that we used to come up with 2,500? We keep talking about this number, but I'm not sure how we ever got there. But I think it was put in place before I was on the council, so I'd love to know how we got to that 2,500. And then on top of that, Janet, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, you can come back to me later, but if we're going to hit the 2,500, which we are, then what's an appropriate goal, do you feel, going forward?
I'd like to answer, if I may. Tara, could you go to slide seven? Oh, is that the right one? No, no, slide 11. Okay, I was probably speaking too fast, but the 2,500 was based on the yield that we estimated in the Affordable Housing Strategy. Each one of the actions, we looked at what they might achieve in 10 years and at what affordability. And then this is the line here, this third column over, the estimate for each of these actions that would produce affordable units. And we added up what the yield might be from what council adopted in the action strategy. So for example, if council had adopted, and we brought back different options, if council had adopted inclusionary, it would have been a higher yield, you know. And that really isn't a goal or a need-based goal. It was what we felt that these tools, the high-end estimate that the staff and consultants did on our analysis. And this was a very analytical process to adopt these actions. We looked at everything that we might be able to get out or squeeze out of these tools. And that's where we came with the number. And if, and if everybody's excited about, you know, increasing this, we may have to come back and, you know, beef up the actions.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then the second question before I yield my time. So it would appear that, so partnership with housing nonprofits certainly has been the most effective of programs. And we've looked at updating the MST prior to this presentation. Are there, is there any other low-hanging fruit that we should take a look at that might substantially increase a number of potential units in, you know, in your estimation, in your due diligence here that we perhaps haven't addressed or spoken to yet that you would like to highlight?
Well, you know, we've built the capacity of our nonprofit housing partners over the years. They're really wonderful partnering, partners to work with. And council has also provided funds for affordable housing that we're anxious to get out the door, that new fund from the state, we're anxious to get out the door. But that's one of the reasons why we're moving on that C1, being able to add density to public surplus and church lands, because our partners are very, very, they're struggling to find land and opportunities where to put the affordable housing in Bellevue. And that's one window that we're trying to open up for them. So right now, I think it's access to property. We seem to be putting the other pieces in place.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much, Janet.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
All right, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Janet, for the great briefing. My single point here is, I think, just building on the need to revisit the goal and understanding what factors played into this current estimate. I'd love for us to get to, and this may not be something that we can do tomorrow, but I'd love to get to a more dynamic model, because actors are changing on an ongoing basis. And it'd be great to know, like, where we need to do more work as those, as those conditions change. But I generally am in support of identifying a new goal, but I'd love to have a more continuous feedback loop.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Great discussion tonight. No, I'm really excited about this. The good news is, is that it looks like we're going to reach our goal. But the bad news is that, well, that we are, you know, aren't going to exceed it by more than about 20%. So that means we need to get more aggressive because we need more housing. So a couple of comments or questions. First of all, I support re-looking at the goal and seeing what we can get to next. I would encourage us to do this work in the context of the GMPC work that's ongoing right now, that's the Growth Management Planning Council. They're looking at growth targets, and they're also looking at housing. And I think that they're going to be coming down with some proposed, you know, affordable housing and housing targets for all the cities as well as growth targets. And that should be coming next year. I'm on that committee, but I think that it would be good to have that context so that we can see what the county's doing as a whole and how we can play our part in that. Because I think it's really important that we make not just Bellevue work, but that the county works. So I think that would be really good context to look at. And, you know, our staff is all over that. Second of all, on the, I know that C1 is the next goal we're going to be working on, because land is a real issue. And one of the things that I have some concerns about is that the goal may not get us exactly what we want in the projects that we want if we don't implement it correctly. So if you look at the technical advisory group and the folks that were on that, they really recommend dispersal of units. So not having every one whole project that's all 50% AMI and below. You might have a project that has 30% AMI, you know, some 80% AMI and some market units. An example of that is, I wrote it down, is the South Kirkland Park and Ride. Many of us were at that opening several years ago. And that is only 25% affordable, 75% market units, but it's 30% AMI. And that's what it took to make that project really work. There's one up in Woodenville that's 64% market rate units with 140 affordable units. So I think having a mix is really what makes it more successful. And it seems like, if you look at this, I don't know if it was this or slide 14, that it looks like we're starting to push for more units at the lower rates that are all clumped together. So one project at 50%, and I really, oh, maybe it was, I thought it was 14. Anyway, one of the slides where you had the projects that we're getting and the ones that are in the pipeline. So I think that we need to look at and be really thoughtful at how we're going to encourage the AMI mix, because for one, developers are more likely to do the project if it's 30% AMI with 70% market, and we get the really low AMI. And the way to get more projects is to have not only the government subsidize and the nonprofits subsidize them, but to get private developers to build them as well. And with the TOD that we've all been talking about, those are, a lot of that is privately owned. And so if we want to have the deeper affordability, we need to figure out a way through FAR incentives and MFTE incentives and other ways, or maybe even a direct subsidy, to buy the deeper affordability for a few of the units and mix them in. Because it's better for the people that are living in the deeply affordable units to be in a mixed project. And it also takes the stigma away. If you have a project, there was one out in Issaquah where the elementary school people, the administration and parents were all up in arms because they thought they were going to, I mean, it's not right, but they were all up in arms about this very, very low-income unit. It ended up being a mixed unit, no problem. They have integrated really well. There's no stigma living in that, in that property because you don't know if the person's coming from a market unit or coming from a 30% AMI unit. And so I think that we really need to start focusing from a policy level on having a dispersion rather than just trying to buy these really big projects that are at 50% or 30% AMI. And that is going to, that's broader than the C1 policy, but that's going to be part of the C1 policy. So I would encourage staff to definitely give us feedback on that. And, and for all of us on the council to be very cognizant of that, because we want good, we want the projects, but we want the projects to also be good projects and to get more units. So that's my two cents. And also on the last topic where we talked about the looking at the impact on tax revenue on MFTE, the, just to, since we didn't have another kick of the can on that. I, when I was talking about the adding the new construction to the AV, that wouldn't take away the benefit. But what it would do is it would help the city be more held harmless. And therefore, we could very much encourage more of these. They don't hurt us, and we could maybe even, if the state allows it, allow a 24-year period. So that's where those two go hand in hand. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Well, I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues. And I'll tell you, I'm going to come out a little bit as a Debbie Downer here, and I apologize for that. But I just want to be kind of realistic about this. If you subtract the beds as housing from the homeless shelter, and you take out the preservation of pre-existing affordable housing, you've only created in four years 565 affordable units. And the housing preservation, even though that's a goal to work with partners, that's been going on in Bellevue well before we had an affordable housing strategy. So when you look at what the strategy is actually stimulating in terms of creating affordable housing, it's not as impressive as it needs to be. And I really feel like this is a go-big-or-go-home moment for us. If we don't take action to put in strategies that actually stimulate the creation of affordable housing in our city, we're going to implode, because we have all these employees come in, and we're very attractive to large employers, but we need to have the full spectrum of housing. And right now, currently, only 10% of our housing is affordable to people earning 80% AMI or under. And that's, that's just not workable. So I would really, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this tonight, and I appreciate the work that has been done. And the work can only be as good as the council direction. So I really would like, even though you're not taking direction tonight, I would really like to encourage a more aggressive approach to creating affordable housing, to implementing these strategies. I have some thoughts on some of the strategies in terms of B2 strategy. That's the ADUs. I would like to look at limiting that to two people and one off-street parking space. I think that one of the biggest problems with putting these in residential areas is the impact that it can have when you bring a whole nother family into an area that cannot accommodate that many people and that many cars. So I think we have to be thoughtful, so if we could think about that. I'd like to look at the microhousing, as we talked about in the other, in the MFTE discussion. I think that is something, especially in TOD, that I'd love to see. You know, there's so many homeless women and men that could afford $300 a month. And if we had affordable microunits that could get down to that level, there are so many people who would never reach homelessness because they would have that option for them. I'm very curious about the mandatory inclusionary housing. I'd like to see what that looks like in TOD. I don't know what the answer is, but we have really good examples in other cities that have done it and other cities that have not. And it would be great to have some sort of an analysis to see if we implemented that in TOD, how that would affect our development of affordable housing. And then in terms of the goal setting, that was a good conversation that Deputy Mayor Noonhouse initiated about how do we set that goal? It might be helpful to create a goal where we have a percentage of all development, all residential development have, that our goal is to that we have 30% of all development be affordable or something like that. So I'd like to, I'd like staff to bring back a recommendation on goals. And I really think that, you know, our large employers are creating demands for housing, blessedly, in our city. And I would really like to tap them to help us bring the resources we need to achieve these goals. And I hope that staff will be having that kind of a conversation in the future, and that we can all come together to aggressively create the affordable housing numbers that we need to have, a whole spectrum of housing for people who are moving up the income ladder and those who are moving down the income ladder. And that is my goal for the city. And I'm really looking forward to seeing what staff can do. And I support you in all your efforts, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe just a couple updates. There were, there are things that we are coordinating with our Development Services Department on. So some of the things that are coming up today, like the microunits. One of the big issues that comes up with microunits is relationship of parking and parking provision, because typically it's number of stalls per unit, which when you get a much smaller unit is different than a much bigger unit, of course. So we are working out the resourcing now between my department and Development Services to look at how quickly we can move those Luca things forward for council. to look at how quickly we can move those Luca things forward for council consideration. There have been some other things that have happened as well. I think Deputy Mayor Noonhouse asked, well, where are we on some low-hanging fruit things? We've been working on some of the parking and we did the interim control ordinance. We've been looking at zero lot line and townhome development. That may sound like really minor things, but they're really important to a townhome developer to be able to plat in the way that, uh, they want to so that they can get the units created. So a number of those things have been coming, uh, they're just coming in small bite-sized chunks, uh, to the council. The big moves now really are the C1 and the MFTE. And we're going to push those through. Um, and so we're working, uh, between Mr. Brennan and I on what the 2021 strategic plan for the two departments looks like. And we'll probably have, uh, um, more on that later.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for your good work. Okay, um, I would, uh, I'm going to see, get the view so I can see everybody. Are there any more comments or questions from the council? You can raise your hand if you have anything more. Okay. I don't see anything. Oh, I see councilmembers on. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So my only comment is I agree with the C1 and the MFTE. But I do want to stress that if we can do more around the ADU and the DADU and the mayor, you brought up the, you know, if we can look at maybe two people and a parking on the street, I, I want to make sure that that strategy is also advanced along with these other two because I think they're complementary to the whole. And that really goes to the ability of having small individual discrete ADUs. And we've been hearing from the community, a desire for them to do that, but the code doesn't really allow them to do that. And so I, I think that's a really important piece to also include.
To clarify, I said one off-street.
Oh, one off-street, yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, I think that is the end of our meeting. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you next week. Meetings adjourned.